All right, guys, it is seven oh one. I apologize for the slight delay. We had a pen issue. So we're going to chalk that up to technical difficulties. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the town of Youngsville to order and turn things over to Pastor Cooper and lead us in the case.
Thank you. Allow me to start this break for us tonight. On the center stage we're per tonight, Israel, it's like any other nation had their good kings or bad kings. Okay, there was one ruler, his name was J. Bass, and he had a simple prayer. This prayer was this. It says, "Expand my borders and bless me the knees." And the Lord granted this prayer. And the one thing we know about Youngsville is your borders are expanding and your responsibilities are expanding. So we're going to ask the Lord to bless us in these responsibilities. So this prayer is Father in heaven, will we come to you to act grace in your great and holy name? Father, be thankful for this place called Youngsville, North Carolina, that we get to live in, that we get to have our families here, that we get to play in, that we get to work in. Father, I thank you for our town leaders. And certainly you are blessing this town, Lord, with new businesses coming in, new families and homes, and Lord, as they grow. Father, I pray, Lord, that you would just bless our leaders, so we give them the wisdom to serve this community and to serve them well. Father, I also like to thank you tonight for the two officers who are being sworn in for Officer Houston and Officer Wasniski, Lord. Father, be thankful for their service, Lord. Father, we pray that you will protect them, Lord, be with their families, Lord. Father, we ask that they would find favor in all they encounter and all they serve. And Father, as this meeting persists tonight, Lord, Father, we ask that you would give us unity. Father, if we have any citizens that are coming forward tonight, Lord, let us hear them and hear them well and respond accordingly. So Father, we ask you to bless our time tonight. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And that is unanimous, so none opposed. So move along into item three, swearing in of Youngsville police officers, Christopher Wasniski and Seth Houston.
Chief. I'd like to first start by thanking the members of the board for your support and your ongoing commitment to providing our officers the resources that they need to keep our town safe and fulfill their duties. I'd like to thank the members of our community and our citizens that are in attendance tonight. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the inviting guests, the families and friends that are here tonight. Certainly, nobody knows better than you and the sacrifices that these officers make when they leave home every day. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the sacrifices that you two made when they do leave home and your dedication and your commitment to the vision. And we owe you a debt of gratitude. So thank you. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the newest members of our team. First, Mr. Christopher Wasniski. Officer Wasniski served with the U.S. Army for two years, where he attained the rank of infantryman. He served previously with Prince William County as an officer for four years, and thereafter with the city of Durham, first as an officer and then as a corporal for a total of sixteen years of service. Now I'd like to introduce Mr. Seth Houston. Officer Houston served with U.S. Marines for five years, where he served as a military police officer and a K-9 handler. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from New Hampshire Technical Institute, and he also served with the city of Durham for five years. Do my best to pray and solemnly swear in office. Thank you, Father. In the name of the Lord, I state your name, I said Houston. You solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will be alert in this one, that I will be alert and intentional to enforce the criminal laws, to enforce the criminal laws of this state, of this state, that I will not be influenced, that I will not be influenced in any matter, in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, on account of personal bias or prejudice, that I will support and maintain, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully and impartially, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute, discharge and execute the duties of my office, the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer, as a law enforcement officer according to the best of my skill, according to the best of my skill, abilities and judgment, so that I will be valued by the laws. Thank you. It was too. I believe there's a couple of members at office of the audience that would like to enter house. Let's get this way, this way, that way, that way.
You look like you were trying to hide it before you came down. They want to take their own just wish.
Or something, if you have a family pictures, have a lot of it. All right, for our final presentation tonight, we would like to recognize Officer Gabriel Fenera for his intermediate law enforcement certificate. Officer Fenera receives this certificate from North Carolina Justice Academy to recognize his twenty-two credit hours in criminal justice from Vance Graham Community College, his seven hundred and six training hours in law enforcement, and his five years of dedicated law enforcement service. Well done. Ever to get it. I can't see him right, I can picture him, I need to run somewhere else. See you as always. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Outstanding work, and we, we absolutely do appreciate everything that our PD and first responders all across the board do for us in the town of Youngsville. So thank you, guys, so much. Next up, we have public hearings. Item A under public hearings is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Table eight dot one, Table of Uses to Add Micro Manufacturing as a Listed Use. I will go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of seven eleven and turn things over for a staff report. Is there anything above and beyond outside of what was in our packet for review?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Hearing none, I will go ahead and open up to comments from the public. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on item five A?
No one signed up and no one registered.
All right. And hearing none, I will go ahead and close that hearing as of seven twelve and move along into item B, which is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Table eight dot one, Table of Uses for Emergency Services, Radio Tower as a Listed Use. I will open that hearing to the public as of seven twelve and turn things over for staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The same, the packet had the majority of information in it. I'll have to answer any questions if anyone had any question.
Did we have any?
No one signed up. No one registered, no one signed up.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on item five B? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and close that meeting as of seven twelve and move along into item six, citizens' comments. Do we have one, any, do we have anyone in attendance that would like to make a citizen's comment?
Unregistered and no one signed.
All right, hearing none. We'll move along into the consent agenda. Any action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Moving right along, old business. There is no old business, so moving into item nine, new business. Item A is the text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Table eight dot one, Table of Uses to Add Micro Manufacturing as a Listed Use. Again, the action requested here is to approve text amendment as proposed. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners?
I was just curious if anything prompted this amendment. Is there something that, like, happens that made you think about micro manufacturing?
Yes, Commissioner Redd. There was a zoning permit that was written for an office use on, I believe it's Mosswood Boulevard, but in, in one of the smaller industrial parks, just in that right off of one, not the Wheaton Avenue area. And when staff went out to investigate, they were running some 3D printers and laser engravers and those sorts of things. And it wasn't really an office use, but it wasn't wholesale. So it was one of those things that was like, this probably is what was meant by this kind of commercial space with a small bay in the back and then a front office area with an air conditioning and water type thing. And seems to staff to mesh with what our plan is for having that smaller scale manufacturing, not having, you know, we don't have enough land for a car manufacturing plant, but if we could do something where we would create some little widget that would go in every car, that would be even better, right?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
All right, do I hear any additional questions?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, got a first. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? That is consensus there. Item B, text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Table eight dot one, Table of Uses for Emergency Services, Radio Tower as a Listed Use. Kind of feel like this one is also a slam dunk. I think it's going to help our police and fire and EMS be able to communicate quite a bit better. So I think if anything, of all the things on the agenda tonight, this one should be more of a slam dunk. But I don't have a vote, so I will open things up for the commissioners to see if you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns prior to calling for a vote.
No.
All right, well, the action requested here is to approve text amendment as proposed.
Motion to approve.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, and any opposed? That motion carries. Item C, amend code of ordinance, one dot two zero one, Office of the Mayor, one dot two zero two, Office of Town Administrator, and one dot two zero three, Other Officers and Employees. The action requested is to approve amendments as proposed, and I will open it up for any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners. All right, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve amendments as proposed?
Motion to approve.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? That motion carries. And next up, we get to swear in a little bit of a historical occasion, the, the first town manager for town of Youngsville. So, Mr. Page, I guess I will swear you in.
Thanks.
Okay, and since we know your name, I'm just going to call it that. If you just repeat that to me, it's out there. Okay. I, Nathan Page, I, Nathan Page, do solemnly affirm, solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws, Constitution and laws of the United States, the United States, and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina and Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, not inconsistent therewith, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the town of Youngsville, to the town of Youngsville, and to the constitutional powers and authorities, and the constitutional powers and authorities, which are or may be established, which are or may be established, for the government thereof, for the governments thereof, and that I will faithfully and impartially, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute, discharge and execute, the duties of my office, the duties of my office, as town manager for the town of Youngsville, as town manager for the town of Youngsville, according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment, according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment. Thank you. Thank you.
Who knew fixing something one hundred forty-eight years old would be that difficult, right? All right, item D, tax collector's settlement report. Madam Clerk, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I'll just run through it really quickly. It is a combination of your settlement report for current taxes, your settlement for delinquent taxes, the resolution that will approve the settlement for insolvent, and the master tax balance list of June thirty. There is also order of collection of the twenty twenty-three taxes, which I have to bill by the end of this month. The preliminary settlement report does include a list of all persons still owing both real and personal property tax for the tax year twenty twenty-two. The second report is the settlement for current taxes that includes all charges, billing, interest, penalties, et cetera, and credits such as payments, releases, and past due taxes to the tax blocker. The year, we had a total of charges of one thousand, one million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ninety-five cents that were given to the tax blocker for collection. We do have a remaining balance of real property for eighteen thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and fifty-three cent, and personal for four hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. We are holding steady at an even ninety-nine percent collection for twenty twenty-two taxes. That does include the annexations throughout the year, some of which were just recently billed and have not yet been paid, but they should become soon. The third report is the settlement for delinquent taxes for tax years two thousand and four to through two thousand and twenty-one. It also includes the charges, same as for the twenty twenty-two taxes. There's also a list that contains delinquent personal property taxes that have been due for over five years and are owed by deceased taxpayers, businesses that are no longer in business, or taxpayers that no longer own the personal property that was taxed. These are not leaned upon real, on real estate property. I've made diligent efforts to collect these taxes, however, most of these are uncollectible. That does not mean that if opportunity does not arise, I will collect them and have done so before, but they are considered insolvent, and so there will need to be a resolution to approve the insolvent taxes. And then the final action is the order of collection that is needed before I can do my billing. And like I said, hopefully I should have the tax roll for Franklin County around the twenty twenty.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns from Madam Clerk?
Always done the best job with tax collection you have, so thank you for that.
All right, so we do have two items here to approve. The first action requested here is to adopt resolution approving the settlement with the tax collector for insolvent.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. And the section, uh, second action requested is to approve order of collection.
Make motion.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item ten, reports and other business. I get to go first, so I wanted to welcome Ms. Garcia as our new planning zoning person. I'm assuming town manager Page was probably going to speak to that, so hopefully I didn't steal your thunder too bad, but we wanted to welcome you on board. Hopefully, it's been a pretty seamless transition, and we're certainly happy to have you here, so. Really don't have a ton. It was wild because it felt like it was such a long length of time since the last time we met until today, but wanted to thank, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of the first responders and what they do, what they bring to the table. Again, whether it's our police department, fire department, EMS, and then the news coming out here locally that our volunteer fire department was going to start coverage twenty-four seven to keep people alive was a big step, and I don't understand why it was such a hurdle for those guys to have to jump through. There's probably a lot of that stuff that I shouldn't be aware of or maybe should be more aware of, but I do applaud those guys for not taking a note for an answer and being the leaders in the county instead of waiting for someone else to, to do something and then jump on board. So I applaud the fire department big time for that, so. I don't think if I got anything else. If not, I'm sure when you guys talk, something will pop into my head, but. Golf tournament was successful. Unfortunately, I did not win this time around, so I got to, I got to check my, my players next time and make sure they're carrying me a little bit better, but. Yeah. Commissioner Johnson, no, what happened, I ran out of eraser is what happened, so. But no, it was fun. I think it raised a pretty good chunk of change, and obviously that's going to Parks and Rec and helping out with the Sesquicentennial stuff that we have coming up here as well, so. I think that's it for right now, but if, again, if something else jars my memory, I will, I'll speak to that. But having said that, I'll turn things over to Commissioner Redd. Hello.
Um, I went to the Kualanis meeting last month. It's a great group of people, and they are doing really good things for Youngsville, so I'm going to continue to attend, kind of be a liaison between Kualanis and the town, and hopefully some good things will happen. We talked about some good stuff last time, so I'm excited to get started with that, and that is all I have.
All right, Commissioner Percy?
Uh, two weeks from now, twenty ninth, the, not the town, but in town, they will be hosting the Summer Fest event, lots of downtown, local vendors, local craft people. It's a great time. It'd be the second time they did it. Everybody show up. It was a huge turnout last year.
Anything else? All right. Mr. Johnson, what you got? Do you like the new chairs? A little bit more.
Oh, absolutely. I contest. I, I really don't have anything. It's been a couple of months. I've been here. I've been in, in Georgia for about six weeks, so. Glad to be home. Like a lot better here.
Glad to have you back. Yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, and Commissioner Wiggins? All right. Oh, yeah, the Mudcats. Yeah, that was a great fundraiser for Parks and Rec as well. I got to throw out the first pitch. I did not embarrass myself too bad.
It was great.
It was high and outside. I did not bounce it.
You did not bounce it.
Every time I'm throwing out a first pitch, any time he's around, he'll, the only advice is like, just don't bounce it. So I did not bounce it, so I feel, I felt pretty good about that. Yeah, it was a little bit outside.
With a cartwheel right after you.
The kids were asking me to twerk, but I just felt like that wouldn't have been a, a good look for the mayor, so. But no, it was, it was a great night, fireworks afterwards, the Mudcats won, so. And it got to raise almost a thousand bucks for Parks and Rec, so it was outstanding. Ms. Katie Barbara Jones, did you have anything?
Anything? Probably the big news that you already know is our charter passed the General Assembly. It is officially in the books as of July third as session law twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three, and the Secretary of State should have a copy by now, so we are completely official on that. And I have only received one citation for a heavy truck violation since our last meeting, which I understand that is not due to a lack of police presence out there, so I believe that the word has spread among the truckers, you know, please don't go down our small residential streets. So hopefully that that's consistent with what you all are seeing as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, good deal. When we get a copy of that, I feel like we've got some space around here. We can get that hung up, so. Looking forward to seeing that, so. All right, so having said that, thank you for that report, and I will turn things over to staff and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just a couple of items. So the first was to introduce Lucy Garcia, our new planner. She came to us via a planning degree from Elon and worked with me as an intern at the town of Graham and just did absolutely stellar work above and beyond in system role, so we are quite lucky to have her come on board. For the first few days, like my first few days, she was trying to figure out why everything is named Holden. After we got past that, we, we were able to identify a lot of the neighborhoods and are moving forward, and she has taken an active role in our comprehensive land decent transportation plan, which, as Commissioner Percy alluded, will be out there with everybody else during the Summer Fest, housing a tent, so come and encourage folks to give us public input at the, at that time for what they want the town to look like and the transportation networks and the grids look like in the future. I think the board has probably seen the culvert extension that is finally completed at the intersection of Railroad and Winston Street. The Public Works Department was able to accomplish that in about three hours worth of work. I think previously they had figured it would take them four days worth of work, so they're rightly so proud of their success, and we hope to build on that by doing other similar little projects around. You saw that we've completed the sidewalk from Town Hall to the, to back here so that our clerk doesn't have to walk in the mud, go come back here for our meetings. And that was also the Public Works Department. The fiscal year twenty-three budget has wrapped up. We have started the preparation for the audit, and we anticipate, Lee, the same auditor that we've had in the past, of S.P. Douglas and Associates, coming back again to do our audit this year. He is supposed to be here August first to start looking through our stuff, which is a very aggressive timetable for auditors. It's exciting because that will probably mean that we submit on time to the Local Government Commission, which, as you guys are aware of, last year, the first year that we had an on-time audit in decades, so it's something that some of us nerds are excited about because we did the deadlines. We also ran a net positive this year, so our fund balance increased again. As I have been reminding you, and we're all aware, that does not yet account for the balance that goes out for the Main Street project, so we're going to have a large transfer from the fund balance to the Main Street project at some point in either this audit or the next audit cycle, so the fund balance may have artificially been large this year, depending on what you look at, because we owe about a million dollars to the Main Street Improv Project. And lastly, I wanted to say, thank you for the trust that you put in me by naming me town manager. It is a privilege to continue to serve residency in Youngsville. I'm really excited about it. And those of you that I've talked to about trying to buy a house, I was finally able to. to hang down a certain landowner and closed earlier this week. So it's been quite a momentous week for me to, to become a landowner in Youngsville and to be named the town manager, so thank you very much for that.
All right, any other items? Any other reports or business from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. For those that haven't traveled down Main Street, looks pretty good, and we're supposed to be breaking a little bit more ground in August to complete, supposed to be completing, breaking ground to complete the Five Points stuff in August, so looking forward to having all of it completed. So thank you guys for the hard work and getting that stuff done. Item eleven is closed session. There is no need to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned seven thirty-two.